I'd like to call the order of the Avalon City Council Meeting of November 6th. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
And if we would just help take a moment to remember Maria Martinez, who passed away within the last three weeks, and Davis Strada. Please be seated. And may we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Albers?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And I'd like to read into the record that Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy will not be in attendance tonight.
She is on city business.
Thank you. Okay. Presentations this evening?
We have two this evening. Dan, could you come up?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A little overdue, but I thought it was a great opportunity with some of the renovations that we worked with Avalon Community Church on recently at the end of the summer. But we've got Matt Guzada here to do a presentation on the teen center and what's been happening. Just a little quick backstory. I'm here just about two years, just over two years now. One of my first days with the city, Dave Hart took me around the community, look at our parks and some of the things that we had been doing, and drove by the community center and there was a sign said, "Teen Center Closed Till Further Notice." So I took the opportunity to reach out to Pastor Schmidt Pecker Scott, who's here in the office, in the chambers tonight, just to see what we could do in partnership. And I had some dialogue there and we partnered with Avalon Community Church October of 2016 to open the teen center. Some further dialogue and going to that particular service, I was introduced to Matt as a potential candidate. We interviewed some potential candidates at the time and he turned out just to be a great fit. So with that, Matt has been doing a fantastic job and he's got a real heart for the community, real heart for the teens in the community, and he's going to take us through what's been happening at the teen center.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Matthew Casada. It's just an honor to be here. Thank you for having me. Okay, so...
Very hip.
I have entitled this, "The Revision of the Teen Center." Well, I want to start with our vision statement. Our vision statement is to provide a safe and fun environment for kids to be kids. A place where community is built, lasting memories are made, and providing children with healthy alternatives becomes a reality. We model respect, we strive for honor, and we aim for integrity in all that we do. A little bit of background on the teen center. I've been here just for a handful of years and during that time, I've learned a lot about the teen center. It started back in the 1960s. I believe Bernie from the Lions Club was one of the original founders. It's gone through a series of leadership, everyone from Enrique to Pastor Scott, John Burcom, and a lot of other people throughout the years. Through the generations, kids have been able to enjoy this center, whether it was, you know, big or a small program, they've still found it something to do in the community and I think that's key. Even though the demographic has changed throughout the years, that's definitely apparent. The need to be a kid, the need to have a place on this island to call your own as a child, as a kid, is still very relevant. The teen center was closed when I did arrive to the island. Many jokes were made, "Hey, you'd be a great fit." And I never saw that as a reality, but as time proved on, you know, I was something I did consider and I actually really do enjoy what I do. It has been one of the highlights and privileges of my life and I'm just so thankful to serve my community in doing so. It was closed for due to lack of funding and there were some issues with some volunteers, but as Dan mentioned before I came up here, partnering with the Avalon Community Church, Pastor Scott, some of the key people in the recreation department, really did see the need for these doors to be opened and as a result, it's opened again and we like to say it's open with a bang. So here's just a picture of our banner. When we hung that up, we hung it proud and we're so thankful for the people that really paved the way for it to be what it is today. Where do we begin? What a huge task. When I moved to the island, I didn't have any idea of what to do with a teen center. And I just said, "Let's start with the most basic of needs," and that was casting a vision. Some of those vision needs were replacement of some cosmetics such as carpet and just some updated equipment, some furniture, some TVs that are from the 2000s. Some just positive quotes. I really believe in powerful quotation. Kids are going to see things and take it in and we just really want them to feel like this is a place where that's cool, an environment that they can be safe in and still have positive quotes and just a vibe and energy there. That's important with today's world being so negative. Some fun memories, just a few highlights. I wanted to keep this brief and short. We've done things such as movie nights, interior trips to Shark Harbor and Two Harbors, fundraising at both Spring Fest and Fall Fest, rec nights, which we do three nights a week, Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturday evenings. We do keep Wednesdays short because it's a school night. Overtown trips to Soak City, that was fun. CBS, campus by the sea, just little things on the island and of course, the famous All-Nighters, which the kids would love to have every weekend if they could. These are just a few pictures. We really wanted to focus on relationship. Being new to the island, I realized that these kids didn't know who I am and I don't know who they are, so it's been really a saving grace to just get to know their personalities, to find out what their dreams are and who they are as individuals. And they have really built what I like to consider a teen center family. We're not just a club, we are family. So we are building community through relationship and it's really, it's really an exciting thing to see these kids grow and mature. I'm already, I don't have children, but it's like they're my children and I get to see them. They have jobs now and they're dating and, you know, some have trickled in and some have gone, so I have a short window with them. Where do we go from here? Well, we're moving forward in a positive direction. The teen center is not just a club, like I mentioned, it is family. We are confronting some really core issues that I believe surround all of our children today and those issues include bullying, disrespect, integrity, character, responsibility, and accountability. Creating opportunities for memories to be made and lasting bonds between friends, that's going to be the key. That's what's going to drive these kids to the next level. And casting a vision that's much bigger than ourselves, learning how to put others first has been huge. I've noticed when we can focus on other people, we tend to take our eyes off ourselves and that's when the magic really happens. Cultivating a healthy program that will provide an amazing teen center for generations to come, that is really the goal here. And hopefully, preparing our next generation of leaders. Lastly, on behalf of the children of the teen center and myself and some community members, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for believing in this. Thank you for continued support of this. We brought this vision to the town and the town responded well. We were able to collectively combine, get a donation of $20,000 to renovate the teen center. And I'd like to mention some of those organizations today. The Catalina Island Foundation, the Yacht Club, the Lions Club, Caleb from the Lobster Trap, Avalon Community Church, of course, and last but not least, the City of Avalon. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Matt, on average, how many kids do you have participating?
So I can have anywhere from 25 to 45 kids on a night.
And what's the age span? What do you see?
So typically, it's sixth grade through about eighth grade, but I've had some third graders coming in and my whole thing is as long as you're respectful, you play by the rules, and you're, you know, you have a good time, you can be in here. But it's a privilege for that age.
Okay. Questions, comments? Thank you very much. And that was a great presentation. You're very good with all that computer stuff. It's very attractive.
Luckily, you just have to press a button.
No, but somebody had to make that, create all that. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Oh, and now for, now we go into the fun stuff. So Matt Baker?
No fun pictures or action in my presentation. What's been passed out is something pretty later. This presentation right now is focusing on our CalPERS unfunded accrued liability. We'll discuss that later.
Yes.
So just for anyone who doesn't know me, my name's Matt Baker. I'm the senior accountant for the city and I'm here to present on the city's CalPERS retirement program specifically related to the unfunded accrued liability and what that means for the city. So just as an overview, the city uses CalPERS to administer its retirement program. So what that means is the city employees, the employer, all contribute to an investment pool that's managed by CalPERS. That investment pool is made up of, as you can see in the graphic, 61% of the earnings in the pool come from the investments. 26 cents of every dollar comes from employer contributions and 13 from the CalPERS members themselves. That number fluctuates every year depending on investment earnings, but generally, it's a good indicator of where the money comes from to fund the retirement pool. CalPERS uses a defined benefit program and what that means is that when a city employee retires, the amount they will receive as a pension is a set fixed amount and it's known by the employee when they retire. So different from say a 401K plan where it's subject to fluctuations in the market, a defined plan allows the member to know exactly what benefit they'll be receiving when they retire. There's a number of factors that go into how that amount is calculated, but in general, it's the service credit, so that'd be the number of years the employee serves. The benefit factor, which varies depending on the employee's occupation and when he joined the CalPERS program. And then lastly, the final compensation, which is really the average of the last three years of the employee's compensation. And so multiply those together and that gets the unmodified allowance, so that's the maximum amount that an employee would receive. So as I mentioned earlier, the city plays essentially 26 cents of every dollar is from an employer contribution. Cities, City of Avalon specifically contributes in two ways. There's something that's called the normal cost, which is the amount the city provides each year to pay for the liability that was assumed that year for its employees. So that factors how much it will cost down the road for the retirement benefit that the employees get this year. The second piece is the unfunded accrued liability. What that means is that when the market value of assets that we have isn't enough to cover the liabilities that we've incurred in the past, we have a unfunded liability. What has to happen then when you have an unfunded liability is the city would have to make additional contributions to make up that difference because that liability is already owed for prior service that the employees have performed. The payments for that are amortized over a set number of years, so similar to a mortgage because there is a, say, an amount of a million dollars that wouldn't necessarily need to be paid immediately, but actuaries do an analysis for us that says how much we need to pay over what amount of time in order to make up that difference. As I'll mention later in the slides, that number's always changing because it varies based on actuarial assumptions, which goes into termination rates, mortality rates, as well as the performance of the fund itself. So one thing I'm just going to touch on briefly, some of you may know, there's something called the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, or PEPRA. Essentially, what that did was it attempted to shift some of the costs associated with the retirement plan from the employer to the employee. So there are new rules that were put in place such as limits to the amount of pensionable compensation an individual can earn. Currently, that number's at 125,000, I believe, so if there were an employee in the PEPRA system making more than that, they would be capped as far as what they could earn in the pension. PEPRA does a lot to hopefully limit large unfunded liabilities in the future, but it really only applies to the newer employees that were hired after December 31st, 2012. So the goal of it is to hopefully that cities won't be in the situation they're currently facing with large unfunded liabilities, but it doesn't do anything to address the existing liabilities that were present prior to this new system. So each year, the city receives from CalPERS an annual valuation report. This report's made available to the public and at the end of the presentation, I do have a link to it. In general, what the report will tell you is how well funded our plan is, how much the city needs to contribute, the estimated or projected costs the city will need to contribute in the future. Again, CalPERS will give you an amount two years in advance of what you will need to pay. They do project what future costs will be, but those are still subject to performance of the fund as well as potential changes to the actuaries' assumptions. The reports also give cities analysis of what they can do if they choose to pay down the unfunded liability quicker and we're going to go into some of those in more detail later in the presentation. As well as they also discuss how sensitive the payment amounts are to market change. So there are certain assumptions of how well the investment pool will do. The annual report will let you know that if the market state performs less than expected, how much additional unfunded liability would the city be accounted for. So here's just a quick overview. The city currently has five plans that they offer to employees. The benefit formula that I mentioned below, or before, is in the first row. So if we took myself, for example, I just joined the city six months ago, so I'm a PEPRA member. If we were to assume that I've worked for the city for 31 years and retired at 62, my formula would be as seen above, with the 31 years of service times the 2% contribution rate, times the assumed average of my last 30 years. That number's just made up for demonstration purposes and that would get me my pension number. So that's how the formula works. As you can see, all our plans, we take the average of the last three years to determine the final compensation amount. And the reports also show the number of current members, former members, separated members, et cetera. So this is a slide probably of most interest and this is the current funded status for our five plans. The first line on it, the present value of projected benefits, factors the amount of benefits the city has previously incurred as a liability, plus the projected amount in future years that will add to that. For the purpose of determining the unfunded liability, the second line item is the one that we're going to focus on, and that is the amount of liability the city has already assumed from employees prior service. The third number down is the market value of assets. So all of CalPERS funds are pooled together in a pool, but they do track how much the city has contributed and how much those funds have grown. So that third line will give you that information. And if you take the difference between the second line, our accrued liability, and the third line, which is the market value of the assets the city has in the CalPERS system, will get you the unfunded liability amount. As you can see, our two classic plans are currently in the mid-'70s funded status. And the last line there, down there, will tell you what the amortization base is for our unfunded liability payments. So how long we will be making these unfunded payments to close that gap.
And that's if no more money's put in, or this is with the existing retirees?
This is for the existing retirees and the employees that are currently serving for prior years of service. That is our unfunded accrued liability, that third line there. So the next slide is a breakdown of what we currently have to pay to fund the unfunded accrued liability. The first two columns, the 2018, 2019, are known amounts. So when they issue the annual valuation report, they do commit to a number two years out to allow cities to know in well in advance how much they will be expected to contribute for the unfunded liability. The following five columns that are italicized are still subject to potential actuarial changes or changes in market condition. So those amounts aren't a fixed amount and they could change in future reports. One of the reasons why we've seen a significant increase in our unfunded liability is due to a change that CalPERS made in the discount rate. So the discount rate is essentially what CalPERS assumes the investment pool will earn each year. That discount rate was changed from seven and a half to seven and while that amount may not be that significant sounding, when you compound it over 40 years, it creates a significant change to the unfunded liability amount, the amount we would have to pay. What CalPERS did to try to lessen the impact on cities is they spread out the cost of doing that shift over several years. So the increase wouldn't happen all at once, but would be kind of spread out to better allow cities to kind of absorb that additional increase. So as I mentioned, the discount rate went from seven and a half to seven. There are currently, to my knowledge, no plans to change it again, but that number is subject to change, so CalPERS in the future could decide that a 6.5% or 6% is more reflective, in which case we would see similar increases. And conversely, they could decide that a 7.5% or an 8% is more likely, in which case we would see some benefit. Right now, as I mentioned, there's no plan that I'm aware of to change from the 7% and that was a several year process to go from the 7.5% to the 7%. So the, as I mentioned, the projected years are assuming the 7% rate for the 2021, or for 1718, which wasn't completed when they created the last report. It assumed a 7.25% rate on that one particular year. It actually beat that number, so I'm slightly optimistic. The future numbers may be down in 2020, 2021, but in the next slide, I'll show you that the decrease wouldn't be all that significant. So the valuation reports also do some kind of what-if scenario testing. So they provide cities the ability to see if the market outperforms the current expectations, what that impact would mean on the amount you would have to pay each year as an unfunded liability. Just for this slide, I just put up the two classic plans since they have the larger unfunded amounts. But as you can see, currently, the assumption is a 7% performance and so that is what our projected employer contributions for the unfunded liability would be. But you can see in the report what it would mean if the market actually performed a better than 7% rate or worse than 7%. Again, these would be a one-year, when they do these numbers, they're just looking at one year, so the overall impact, one-year fluctuations don't have a significant impact. It's the kind of the projected change over time is where you really see significant savings. There are other what-if analyses is available in the valuation report where they assume what if the discount rate were to change, or what if other actuarial factors would change. So there is more information if you are interested in the kind of what-if scenarios. I just chose this one to demonstrate tonight. So the next piece I wanted to focus on is what the city can do to address the unfunded liability. What we are currently doing is we are making the minimum payments. So you can think of that as having debt on a credit card and paying the minimum amount. We will eventually pay off our unfunded liability doing it this way. We are just paying the maximum amount of interest in doing so. Currently, the interest we're charged is the same as the discount rate and the reason for that is they need to assume that the money we owe them, if it were in the investment pool, it would be earning a certain amount and they use those assumptions when they determine the amount and that is why they have to charge us such a high interest rate. So right now, that is kind of what we have been doing as a city is paying the minimum on our credit card, if you will. There is one option I was going to throw out here. There is something called a pension obligation bond. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it because it's not recommended, as I noted there, by the Government Finance Officers Association, but what it is, essentially, you can borrow money at a lesser rate to pay off the unfunded liability amount. But there are several reasons why there's some risk involved in that if market interest rates were to change and there are costs associated with issuing the bonds. So in, generally speaking, it's not recommended. In discussing with Bob Torres, our interim finance director, he has utilized it in the past with success, but again, there are risks involved if that were an option to be pursued. The second plan, the next three plans, I'm going to go over in more detail on the next slides. One is just making additional discretionary payments, so that's as we have more money, put more money to pay down the unfunded liability. The second plan is requesting what they call a fresh start and you can think of that as refinancing your mortgage from a 30-year to a 15-year. So you are going to be paying more each year, but the benefit is you would pay off the plan quicker and ultimately pay less interest. And then the third option is what's referred to as a pension pre-funding trust. You might also see it as a Section 115 trust. And essentially, what this is, is we could move our money into an investment pool where it could earn a better rate of return than what we're currently earning in lay or in our CD investments, but that money would then be committed to being spent on future pension-related payments. And like I said, I'll go into a little more detail on the next couple of slides. So for the additional discretionary payments, the benefit of that is that's any amount at any time. We can wire, send a check or wire money to CalPERS and that results in an immediate reduction of our unfunded liability. As you'll see when we go over, hopefully, in the next few weeks or month or so, the CAFER or financial, it would result in a reduction in our net pension liability, which does show up on our financial reporting. It does save interest, so on whatever amount we set aside to CalPERS, that's additional money we wouldn't be spending the 7% interest on. The downside is once you send that money to CalPERS, there's no bringing it back. It's in the perp, the public perp, I'm sorry, I have some acronyms up there, is the Public Employee Retirement Fund. And so that's the investment pool that I spoke of earlier. And the last thing is it won't change the amortization period, so if we have a 28-year schedule, as we do for one of the classic plans, putting additional money towards that plan won't shorten the payoff period, it will just reduce the amount we would be paying.
Like paying down your home loan a little bit.
Right. So if you, you know, have a little extra money and you put a couple hundred towards your mortgage, it doesn't change the 30-year nature of your mortgage, but you would be paying less interest on that mortgage.
But, and I don't know, maybe you're going to do this later, but is there, I mean, but what is even an amount that would make a difference?
So there are, if we were to pursue that, we actually can reach out and I had the benefit of meeting our actuary at the CalPERS conference that I attended the other week and we can actually reach out to them and they can provide us some specific what-if Again, if you think about it this way, if we have 100,000 that we either could put in a savings account that's earning 2%, or put that 100,000 into the perp where it would be, where we are currently paying 7% on that unfunded liability amount, we would be saving 5% on that $100,000, so that, 50,000 maybe in my head, I'm doing math in my head, which is scary. 5,000? All right. Stand corrected. So there would be some savings, obviously, the larger the amount, the larger.
Right. 50 bucks a month isn't going to cut it. I mean...
I mean, it's better, you could argue it's better than nothing, but it's, it is dropping the bucket.
And we'd have to feel pretty confident if we gave that kind of money.
If we put the money in, there would be no clawback or it's in CalPERS control at that point. The Fresh Start Plan would be our voluntary shortening of the amortization period. Like I mentioned, think of that as going from a 30-year fixed mortgage to a 15-year mortgage. The downside of that is once you make the change, CalPERS doesn't let you switch back to a longer amortization period. There's a lot of work involved in shortening it and their goal is for cities to shorten There's a lot of work involved in shortening it, and their goal is for cities to shorten it. So it's never their intent to allow cities to kind of stretch out those payments. So if we were to elect that, it would be a decision we couldn't go back from. They do, in the annual valuation reports, provide a breakdown of what, say, switching from our current 20-year plan to a 15-year plan means in terms of annual payments. So you could see the, and they actually on the bottom have what the interest savings would be on making that switch. And it's even going from, say, an 18-year plan to a 15-year plan could result in six-figure savings in interest. So, you know, while it does add some cost upfront, there is significant potential savings in that you're not paying interest on that amount over as many years. The last option, and this is something that's relatively new to CalPERS, but has been available in the private sector, and it's something called a Section 115 trust, or pension pre-funding trust. And what essentially that is, is the city would be able to invest money in a trust that would be managed by CalPERS if we elected to go with the CalPERS version. They also have these in the private sector as well. That money in the trust is committed to being spent on pension requirements of the city, but the benefit of it is twofold. One, we would be earning, in theory, a larger return on our investment than we are currently in just managing it with CDs and life interest. So we would get some of that benefit of pooling our money with other investors and leveraging that for larger returns than what we can currently get by ourselves. The other advantage of the pension trust is that if the city wanted to, there is some ability to withdraw that money for allowable expenditures. So generally speaking, if we put money aside, we could pull it back to offset, say, some of the unfunded liability costs in the future. I mean, the goal would be if we were to move money into a trust fund, would be to not pull it back out, because we would want to see the benefits of compounding interest in that investment pool. But we would have some flexibility to still access that money in the future if we would need it. So that is, right now, CalPERS is putting together a fund that they will manage. But if we wanted to go, and that would be available next fiscal year, but if we wanted to pursue that sooner, there are equivalents in the private sector we could invest in. And then lastly, I want to just touch on our other post-employment benefits. So the city currently offers to current and former employees benefits after they retire, namely, in the form of healthcare, dental, and vision as well, I believe. Currently, the city funds its OPEB obligations, its other post-employment benefits, using a pay-as-you-go model. So what that means is, as the individuals are retired and claim their benefit, we cut them a check for the amount that we owe them for that year or for that month. We don't, or we have not historically, set money aside for future OPEB benefits. And so by that, I mean, all the employees that are currently working, that currently are, receive this benefit, have not retired, so they have not claimed any retirement, OPEB retirement benefits from the city. But at the same time, the city has not set aside funds dedicated for this purpose. Every two years, we have to hire an actuarial firm to put together some accounting requirements for us for our financial reporting. So the last OPEB actuarial report we received as a city was from the spring of 2017, but the data from that was as of June 30th, 2015. And at that time, they estimated we had an unfunded liability for OPEB of $4.5 million. Again, that's based on a number of actuarial assumptions, but the largest one being the assumption that we aren't setting any money aside to fund these post-employment benefits. So if we were to change that approach and start setting money aside in the future, again, we would need to perform the actuarial analysis, but it'd be my expectation that number would decrease, because there are a number of employees currently entitled that benefit that won't be retiring for, hopefully, a long number of years, in which case that would allow time for that money to compound and hopefully cover some of that liability the city has incurred. There is something currently available from CalPERS, an OPEB trust. So it's a similar structure to what I was speaking of earlier with the pension trust, where the city could set aside money and gain some of the advantages of investing with a larger pool, where that, those investments are managed by CalPERS. But the city would have some flexibility withdrawing money from that trust fund to pay its OPEB obligations. And so that's really a great tool that's out there for the city to consider, to try to manage this amount. So lastly, I just put a few links up here, just so the information can be available if anyone's interested. The first link is to the city's valuation reports. You may have to type in the search engine, City of Avalon, there's a search field in there, because you can actually look at any public agency's valuation reports. It's all there for the public. CalPERS also on their site, I thought, had a good explanation of the OPEB trust that I was speaking of, and so that's what the second link is there. And in the last council meeting, I briefly mentioned some of the comparisons of our unfunded accrued liability to other cities. I really didn't think it was necessary to focus on that for this presentation, because it's really irrelevant how much credit card debt our neighbor has. But it actually is a really great report that kind of highlights some of the challenges the city and agencies in California are facing with their pension liabilities. And a lot of the suggested actions they list as their next steps are very similar to the topics that we talked on here, as far as pre-funding the pension liability. So those are three links, if anyone's interested in more information, I highly recommend them to check out.
Any comments or questions for Matt?
Nice job, Matt.
Yeah, very good. It looks like you got a lot out of the conference, and I appreciate.
Definitely appreciate getting to attend. It was an ILV experience.
So then, when do we actually kind of look at this with seriousness? Or do we just say, "Thank you for the information and violence"?
I would like to come up with some plan when we do our mid-year. I think that we've sort of been floating and to
Sinking, though, we're the company.
Yeah, or sinking, but to really dig down and to set up a plan and try to keep to it financially. I mean, there are things that come up, you know, Bob Torres was predicting a recession in 2020. So, you know, that, if that's looming out there, that would change our savings abilities. But at this point, I think we do need to develop a plan.
Hand down the credit card debt would be nice.
Yes.
Thank you for the credit.
Thank you. Did the community have any comments? No? Okay. All right. Announcements in written communications, city manager?
I did receive one written communication. It's regarding, the first half of it is regarding item number eight on the agenda, and I know that it was addressed to all the city council members. I do have a few other announcements, just to remind the public that today is an election day, and the polls are open until 8:00 PM. And it's all three precincts are down at St. Catherine's Church in the auditorium there. So if you haven't voted, you have until late o'clock. I want to remind the public that our next city council meeting will be on Monday, November 19th, at 5:00 PM.
Is that okay with everyone? Are you good with that? So then if you, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
And I'm happy to report that we shipped off some more broken golf carts, and I think this load was all golf carts. So we're up to a total of 46 plus an additional 10-plus that have been chopped up because the VIN number had been taken off, or there was no license plate, or engines had been removed. So those were just chopped off. So this has been taken off the streets. And Richard, I did look into your question about security from the island company, and yes, they have hired people to do that, and they go out in the evening, patrolling all their private properties. They're looking for vandalism, loitering, drinking at certain areas, and so they do have a patrol that's out there doing that.
And that's just on the weekends, or is that every night?
My understanding, it's every night.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
And then I'm happy to tell you that we received 37 applications for the assistant city manager position. Three are, were from locals. Three have lived here previously on the island and in Avalon, and about 95% live in California. So I'll be taking the next couple of weeks to really review the applicants and to whittle them down.
Great.
And I don't know if council has, this is my last one. I don't know if council's been receiving any complaints on honeybees in town. We have received three written complaints on those recently. Staff is in the process of researching if there's a cause for it and coming up with a plan. This is not like our contract that we have for the yellow jacket control that's totally different. So this is honeybees.
Well, I do believe that the honeybees, if we get a winter, they're going to, they're going to do whatever they do, they're going to go away. But I think because when we have rain and we have flowers, we have honeybees, and I personally am glad that we have them. Have you gotten complaints of a bunch of people being stung?
Yes. I have three written complaints of, yes.
Because there are some people who still don't know the difference between a yellow jacket and a honeybee.
No.
There are some, because I had a big talk with, a conversation with Jackson. But anyway, so yes, before we look at exterminating bees, I think we
This isn't, wasn't just to figure out our cause and if there is one, and so I just wanted you to be aware that we had received three written complaints.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see them, because they make things happen. Okay. And we, department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, South Beach Emergency Sewerall Repair, report on that. I'll give a full report on the next meeting after we finish everything up, but the repair started on Saturday. We have worked every day since with Public Works staff and the contractor. You see us out there on South Beach. The product is working as expected. Today, we finished up sealing up the bottom of the wall, and in any direction we could, we foamed the soil, and so it's working as we expected. We did have some difficulties on the first day with identifying all the existing utilities, and the good news is that as we uncovered that, we are mapping those, so we know where those are, you know? So there was Catalina Broadband's fiber was a major concern, and we did find that, and we know where that's located now on the beach. We do want to hit that. We're going to, by tomorrow, we'll have the backfill all in, and we'll be up to sand level, and we'll be starting to condense the whole operation on South Beach. And so then our next step is really to put a safety rail in, extend that safety rail in, because we have about 50 feet of wall that needs to be replaced there. It has totally failed, and it's cracked and totally failed. So, but that's not right now, and that was, that was really what the focus was, was to get this safetied up and prepared for more winter weather. So what we're going to do is actually install a small rock revetment right in the corner where that stairway is for about 30 feet, to be able to take the brunt of another storm. And so we'll finish that up hopefully next week. Quarry has all the rock. It's really just getting the right piece of equipment out there and getting that rock set. So get that rail done, safetied up, get that rock done, and we should be fully ready to open the beach up again. So what you'll see is, it's a very small closure of the beach as we're waiting for that rock revetment to get done.
And you did Step Beach as well?
No, we're going to do Step Beach as Friday.
Oh, Friday, okay.
Yeah. And that wants you to go real quick, because there really, there wasn't the damage that we have. We've been really focusing on that damage. But we went all the way from Muscle Beach and the little bit of holes that were there, you know, over the years. We're sealing that up, and then all of South Beach, that will be finished up tomorrow. And we have injected foam from underneath the footing, so on the waterside, and anywhere we could get into the crevices there, plus worked in the top wherever we could get. That was another problem that we had, was trying to get through some of the repairs, like I said. It's not a very homogeneous subgrade in there. You imagine all the different concrete repairs we've made, the rock repairs over the years. So any questions on that?
Did the Coastal Commission issue an emergency permit?
So I've been in contact with them since the 31st, so we gave them the phone call, like we're supposed to do. And I left a five-minute message for Mandy Revelle, told her what we were doing. And then we, we did send in the permit with all the backup documents, and I gave her updates by phone, because she was difficult to call back, she was in conferences. I did talk to her today, told her what our next step was, the rock revetment, they're fine with everything we're doing, and just at full speed ahead.
So Bob, is this the same repair method that you're proposing to do along Pebbley Beach?
We could use this for filling some of those voids, because what it does is that we don't have to go and remove any of the infrastructure. We can just go right from the top.
I'm just wondering, since they're mobilized, are there any areas, you know, the smaller areas that we could?
Yeah, so the second piece of Pebbley Beach, it's a larger part, because we have to put facing class rock on that after we're done, so.
I'm just thinking, through Lover's Cove, there are areas there that don't seem to be as big.
Um, yeah, there could be some repair. The one thing that we need to do, though, is it's susceptible to UV, so we need to cover it with something.
Okay.
So that's one drawback of it, is that you don't want to let the sunlight get to it. So it does well within the soil, and I will bring you some samples within this next meeting and show you, it's pretty amazing stuff. It's not very good in tensile strength, but in compression, boy, it is hard, hard material, and does bind it up. Okay, so then, next meeting, we'll be, continue on the Vons parking discussion. We didn't do it this meeting, because we didn't have full council tonight. I want to make sure we have full council to be able to talk about that. CDBG has given us the ten of go-ahead to award the Beacon Hill, because you've already given us the go-ahead to do that. But today, we received that from them, that they're good with our bid package, and telling us to award, and then
And how does that translate in terms of when you think that project will go forward?
The contractor's ready to go. So as soon as, you know, that we can get the contract signed, I think that, you know, it should be several weeks, but they could roll out a contractor, their personnel out here to get started. Okay, that's at least what they've told me.
Okay.
And next meeting, we'll discuss the 206 East Whitley remodel plan, so that's coming up. Just to give you a heads up on that. Any other questions for me?
How are we coming with our trash can order?
The trash can, we are waiting for a response from the recycling grant with the purchase, the procurement we have. So we're looking for a response from them that all the methods that we did, the procurement method we did, was okay.
Because they were doing a sole source.
So that one is, that one is behind, but we have everything spec, we have the vendor, we're, as soon as, just like CDBG, they tell us year ago, so that we don't make those grant funds in jeopardy, have those grant funds in jeopardy, we're ready to purchase that. And I think they're saying it was four to six weeks after that, after the order.
Okay.
So slightly behind.
Good evening, council. JG Pointex, the Harbinger Master. Our October, we did some numbers today, and we had 1,266 boats that moored through October. And as far as our cruise ships, we had 15 cruise ships through October with some 29,000 people. So it was a busy, busy October, and we had several yacht clubs come in. Weather was great. We had one, one little bad day on Monday, I think it was the 15th. We got hit with a little bit of a Santa Ana condition, and so we had one boat lose a swim step, so that was a big, full-on, four pumps going to save it. It was a 56-foot boat, so, which we ended up saving, and with Baywatch and, and our harbor guys and their pumps. So that was a, that was a good thing. No injuries, even better. We're in the process of, which I'll be coming back next council, with Float One, to get money to be able to rehab Float One, because the Express has their large boat out up north, which this wasn't budgeted, because I didn't know it was happening, and it'd be the perfect time to get it out of the water. And if you guys ever been on Float One, you see those cleats that are bending up and the metal ripping, we need to get that, that fixed. So that's, that's on the agenda. We're working, I'm working hard to get three quotes, to find out what that's going to cost. So short of that, it's wintertime's here, Jay's gone, and Short of that, it's wintertime's here, Jay's gone, and we're moving, we're moving forward.
Questions?
Any questions?
I just have one. We talked about life rings on the...
Yes, ma'am, and they're all, they're all on the floats.
Thanks, somebody asked me, but I hadn't walked down there to see. Thank you very much.
No, they're, everyone has one there.
Perfect, thank you.
Are we doing the repairs on the, on the float, Float One?
Right now, I'm getting, I'm getting quotes. We have so many projects going, we just don't have the time or the personnel to do that. It's just, and this, something that has to be done within a short period of time. I have to have this float, you know, out of the water to whoever's gonna do it, and back in the water by January 25th, because of Express bringing their boat back, and they're gonna start operating that over President's Weekend in February. So we're, we're kind of under the gun, and we're, you know, it's just, we have way too many things going on.
And where would that work be done at?
I don't know yet. We're waiting, it, I don't know, we're getting...
Where are you gonna take the float?
The float's gotta come out of the water, so we're getting quotes from, from Caleb at the boatyard, I'm getting quotes from the mainland. It's just, I don't know yet, because I'm still trying to get the costs involved in doing that, so. And then also with Caleb's issue with the ramp, Conley's working on that, gonna be starting that project at some time in either November, December, and that's gonna really limit the possibility of either pulling out or putting in. So it, it, there's a lot of...
A lot of coordination.
Yeah, exactly, so. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
News from the Building and Planning Department. We had applied for a coastal development permit for the modular office out at the wastewater treatment plant from the Coastal Commission. They came back and requested for some additional information, so we sent that off, and hopefully we'll be getting that permit pretty soon, so Bob can move forward in figuring out how to get that modular office in out at the wastewater treatment plant. We did change our planning commission meeting date this month to November 14th in order to avoid the Thanksgiving holidays. Let's see, what else I had? The library project has gone out to bid, so hopefully we'll see that project going forward as soon as they can award that bid and doing the renovations down at the library. The trailhead, you can see it's looking really nice. They've got a lot, most of their exterior finishes are done. They're finishing up with the interior equipment and all of their interior finishes, and then of course, you can see them finishing up that nice metal exterior stairway that they've got down there. Same gray, the north building surfaces are at about 50%. They're finishing the foundation on the new part of the lobby portion of the structure, and the south pueblo building interior systems are about 80% complete. That water's going well, they've got all the window installations in, and they, I think last week they were pouring the foundation for the elevator down there. Vons, the curb and gutter is proceeding on Beacon, the gas and water meters are in, the interior equipment is going in, we should see the exterior scaffolding coming down, rain and gutter downspouts, and of course, all the paint colors and exterior surfaces are going up. We've got a lot of calls about the hiring sign that Vons has put up. I think I had emailed all of you what the specific conditions of approvals were. The conditions of approvals were that within 12 months after the new Vons is open, they will have to provide us peak season data for the two existing stores, and so that we can compare that employee information to peak season employees at the new store, and if there's a difference, they will have to come back and comply with inclusionary housing requirements. And I think that's all I have, if you have any questions.
That was, what'd you say, 12 months on that?
I'm sorry. Within 12 months of the new store opening.
Opening, okay.
They'll have to compare peak season employee data for the two existing locations and peak season employee data for the new location, and of course, peak season in Avalon is July and August, so...
So, I mean, you go in there and you see 20 new faces in the downtime, but there's nothing we do about that, right? Because of the way it was written?
The way the condition reads is that we will be doing the certification, if that's what you want to call it, within 12 months after the store opens.
And the ordinance specifically refers to peak season?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. And no questions from the community, or no? Oh, and by the way, I heard, I heard from the manager that the opening date is January 9th. Have you heard that, Amanda?
What I've heard is that...
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm sorry. They, originally, we kept saying before the end of the year, so what I'd heard is that the construction would be done before the end of the year, but of course, then there's a lag time on getting the store stocked and trained and actually get the doors. I had not heard a specific...
Okay, Brian mentioned that to me a couple days ago, but, but that could change. Is that the manager? Yeah.
Matt Baker, speaking on behalf of Finance. Spoke with our vendor on our TOT audit today. They provided me with their initial analysis on the 27 hotels that were in the population, and their recommendations for which ones to proceed. I, as I mentioned, I just got this information today, so I need to discuss it. So hopefully with the next meeting, we'll have an update as far as what the timing looks like to contact the hotels and complete the second phase of that audit. Working with OpenGov, meeting with them regularly, and we're on track to have department training sometime in late January or late February. Again, that's the Budget Builder Module, as well as the public-facing financial reporting tool. Lastly, I spoke with the auditors today. They've committed to getting me the draft caper for the 17 audit early next week. Just from a timing standpoint, we would have the opportunity to review and draft management discussion and analysis section, and from once we give them the go-ahead and provide them with that discussion, it's about a week to finalize. So again, I should have a better update with specific dates, and hopefully a date they can come out, present likely sometime in December. But again, I'll, it just depends on a number of moving factors. So those are what's going on in Finance. If there's any questions.
Any progress with host compliance?
It's on, it's on my to-do, and I'm, I'll make it priority.
When you say host compliance, what do you...
That's the consulting company that we hired to deal with people who weren't paying TOT on short-term rentals?
Oh, 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 okay, yes. Good, that was, yeah, I didn't call it that, thank you. Okay.
And then just a few program updates for your Recreation Department. We are continuing our tumbling dance and ninja registrations through this Saturday. Classes started this past Saturday, we have a few extra spots, so keeping that open for an extra week. Tomorrow, we'll be rolling out a pickleball program. I'm gonna try it on Thursdays for a few weeks to see if I can get some energy there with some of the primetimers. I had five out last week that were interested and excited to do it, and there's a little buzz about it, so we're gonna try and do a Saturday program as well, and see if we can get something going come the first of the year.
And what time is that?
9:30 to 11:00 on Thursdays, and like I said, I'll run that through the first of the year with the goal to get a core group that'll just meet out there on a regular basis, and it'll be a standalone program. We're taking sign-ups for our youth flag football program, which starts after the first of the year, a couple primetimer programs, November 14th. We've got rock painting and lunch for $5 on December 6th. Catalina Escape Room will be hosting us for two sessions, to do the escape room and lunch. And then tomorrow, we'll be starting a second class per week, our senior exercise class. We're on Mondays from 9:15 to 10:00. It'll be Mondays and Wednesdays during the off-season until the water rugby class starts up again. We've extended our Recreation Master Plan draft review through November 15th. We had a few requests for that, some calls on that, some emails, so we're extending out a couple more weeks. They're welcome to contact me with any comments, concerns, questions, and we'll make sure we get that into the final that comes back to council for hopefully adoption. And then lastly, today, I received confirmation, we received a $32,000 open space grant. We requested 35, I was a little shy of that, to do some renovations across the street, some surfacing renovations, some things we need to do at the playground across the street and a few other amenities, so we'll be back as that comes together.
What is the grant funding source?
It is Los Angeles County, the Open Park Space District, yeah, so M&amp;S funds, and they had a excess funds that we applied for, and we received 35 to match our 30 that we already have, so about $65,000 to do some work there.
Fantastic.
So Dan, across the street, as part of this, is it, have we been thinking about lights at all for that area?
Um, yeah, it's not part of that. I mean, that's something that we, you know, it's getting more and more use as we continue to build it out. We do need to look at parks in general and the lighting, and need to kind of determine the level of lighting we'd like to see there. But for, you know, an active park, it's probably not as bright as you'd want it, but for a passive park, it probably, so we can bring that back, it's a further, further discussion.
Okay, thank you. When light posts are put up, is that just a request from Edison and they put it up, and we just pay for the electricity after that, or...
I have no idea.
It's a process.
Yeah. Bob Greenlaw, do you happen to know the answer to that? I'm sorry, you were concentrating on something else, but...
I don't have the exact answer for your hand, and I'll find that out, but usually that's the case. There's a couple different ways you can do it, but if, yeah, Edison can install the lights, then we just pay, you know, a flat rate fee on it. Okay?
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other departments I've missed? Nope. Okay, City Manager report. Thank you. City Attorney?
Yeah, I have one important item. As you recall, a couple months ago, you asked us to work with you on a letter to the state on the marijuana delivery, and the regs came out about three weeks ago. There are 158 pages, plus or minus, and in there, there's a sentence that specifically applies to Avalon and allows medical marijuana delivery via boat. So with those, that, that, that company is gonna be heavily regulated. Again, it's 158 pages of regs, but they did make an exception just specifically for Avalon, and it was only for Avalon. So because of that, when that comes up, I imagine that there will be, it's not just gonna be like everyone others, they're gonna take a specific look at it, so. But it's done, this is the second to last draft, there'll be another draft released, and we have no indications that that will be changed. So that's good news, so thanks for the council for doing that, that's great.
So that's from the state?
That's from the state.
That's not from the state?
Well, yeah, and then, and then I think, I think Councilmember Albers pointed us to a federal statute which actually provides that the state law allows it, the federal, federal law is not gonna enforce it.
Well, it's not, it's the stated policy.
Right, it's the stated policy, yeah.
So far, which could change.
So, exactly. So, 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 so we should be, you know, clear. I mean, we should be in the clear on that, once that franchise is granted.
Great, thank you, that is good news. Councilmember reports. Who would like to begin?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I just, I have this question. Do we still, are we still working on, we're talking about the residential inspector, is that still...
Yes.
Are we still working on that?
Amanda has been doing a lot of research, and we're hoping to be ready for that at the next council meeting. It's tentatively slated for there if she gets to a certain point.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then I just have one question, other question I had Chuck Martin, and he was asking about the, Amanda might be able to answer this one, too, about the carts being regulated for the new Vons, not supposed to be coming off their property or already going so far.
The shopping carts?
Yeah, the shopping carts.
That's a good question.
And I think that was probably one of the conditions, I can't remember off the top of my head, and I haven't heard anything about that. Have you, Amanda, anything about the carts coming off the property from Vons? And I don't know what the condition was for them?
I'm trying to remember what the exact condition was. I don't believe the condition was that the carts were not allowed to leave the property. I believe we asked Vons to create a way that the carts could be retrieved and returned back to the property. I don't believe the condition included like one of those...
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Electronic barriers that kept them from moving. There was some conversation that, perception that for everybody that took a golf cart or took a grocery cart home, that was one less vehicle going in and out of the grocery store. So I can get back to you only what that exact condition was.
Okay. And then one of the other questions was about that, again, about Vons, was the employee parking, if the employees park in the parking lot also?
I don't think we specifically prohibited it.
I don't know if that was covered.
Yeah, yeah, no, so, so, so what the conditions of approval does require, there's language in there in one of the conditions that I have provided direction to staff gives us the ability to require that they do not have employees parking in their lot. So, so, so I looked at that and gave direction to staff. So, so that will not be happening. Hopefully, hopefully it will not be happening.
Okay, great, that's all I had. Thanks, Amanda, appreciate that. Get back to me with your camera. Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay.
I have nothing in the past, but going forward this Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I'll be at Los Angeles at the National League of Cities meeting at the Convention Center in downtown LA.
Perfect, thank you.
For joy, for joy.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On Friday, Mayor Pro Tim Cassavie and I went to a meeting at the yacht club with all the emergency responders, hospital staff, mental health, drug and alcohol, people from the county, Orlando Chico was there, there was about 25 of us total, county fire paramedics. It was a great, it was a great group. We're again addressing more of how to provide mental health, drug and alcohol services. There was a great conversation, not resolved, on the 5150s and the Met teams and all of that emergency stuff, that's gotta be worked out. But anyway, it was interesting. But the one thing is, we've, there's going to be, there's telepsychiatry, there's a lot more gonna, going to be going forward, and we've looked at two locations where we can have some counseling for our folks, because a location is one of our biggest problems to do those kinds of things. So, so we're moving forward, and we'll have more to report soon. There's gonna be a lot of little task force working on specific areas of expertise, so. So that's that. And I just want to give a shout out to Dave Young, who is the editor of the newspaper. He's been, he's been put in a different position with the same group. However, I, I just wanna, I'm gonna miss him because I think he opined very eloquently when he did his editorials. He was covering articles perhaps we normally wouldn't see. I think he was very thorough in covering the city council agendas and the actions out of that, so we wish him well in his new job, and hopefully he will still come and be a visitor to Avalon. And we welcome Mr. Abadaka, who will be his, who is his replacement. That's all I have. Okay, Oral Communications, this is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on issues that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken. Come on up.
I'd like to introduce myself to you. My name is Paul Burchell, I am the new librarian at Avalon Library. Nice to meet you all, I'm delighted to be here. This is very exciting for me. I've been here back and forth for about two and a half years. I was Morgan's main, Morgan Pershing, the previous librarian's main substitute. Every time she had a meeting or she would go away, they'd bring me out, and I would stay. Before that, I was one of the frequent there-and-back-again temporary librarians who would come in for two weeks at a time. I've been a librarian for about eight years. I was based in Culver City and West Hollywood and View Park. I'm very excited to be here at this particular time with the reno coming up. This is going to be a very exciting time. I'm here to assure you that library services are going to continue. I believe Ms. Judy asked me today to make sure that, you all know, you can continue to make donations, particularly for the Two Harbors Project, where we take books over to Two Harbors. I also want to talk super briefly about the programs we have going on right now. I've added a storytime on Saturday mornings, that's in addition to the storytime that services CKV and PLAY, which we do on Wednesdays. This is called Smarty Pants Storytime, Saturday mornings at 10:00. It's a school readiness storytime. We've started an English circle, English is a second language circle, that's Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 5:00 to 6:00. Our library assistant Suzanne hosts that. It's becoming very popular with some of our workers in town. It's becoming very popular with some of our workers in town.
And the goal is working on language skills?
Yes, working on English language skills if you speak Spanish in particular.
Great, good.
It's proving very popular. We went from four to about seven and that's not bad. It's not bad. I've also brought the county library STEM program, the Make Mo Mobile, which is sort of a bookmobile of technology. I brought that out here. They're going to be coming every third Tuesday. Our first visit from the Make Mo was last month on a Tuesday. They brought little robots, Ozobots, which are little square things that you put together and they teach coding. We started with five people, five little kids in the room. Somehow word rippled through the island and within, before the hour was over, we had fifty kids in the room. This is a very popular program. In honor of Native American Heritage Month, we're hosting a make your own talking stick coming up on the fifteenth. That's just basically a lovely art project. We have some promotions going on, Disney on Ice. We're giving away a chance to win a five pack of Disney on Ice tickets. Oh, I think I'm running out of time?
It's okay. Don't worry. This is all good news.
And the In-N-Out Burger book project as well. So kids can read five books, get a certificate for a free hamburger. So thank you very much. I'm glad to be here.
Great, Paul, and welcome. That was great.
Thank you, I'm very excited.
I like the new program.
I get a burger?
Hello, my voice is really soft. Can you guys hear me okay?
As long as you're on the mic, we're good.
A little lower?
There you go.
Is that good? My name, I want to thank you very much for your time. My name is Emily Hamblin. I'm one of the wildlife biologists for the conservancy. I'm very happy to be living on the island now. My colleague Laura Brenner and I have been noticing a pretty large increase in non-native invasive honeybees, mostly in Avalon, but they're going over into the Two Harbors and into the interior as well. And we just wanted to open ourselves up as a source of information about different types of bees and what, what could possibly be done and what needs, what would help. So the honeybees that we've been seeing around town compete with our native endemic bees. We actually have two species, the Catalina Longhorn bee and then the cuckoo bee. Both really wonderful pollinators that have evolved on the island with our island species. And they're really neat. I can show you pictures later on, but these honeybees are competing with our native pollinators. And not just our native bees, but we have native moths, native wasps and native flies, all of which are in competition with the non-native bees. In addition, the non-native bees, they can reduce the biodiversity on the island and they can introduce parasites and bacterias that we would not normally have on the island. And they also tend to pollinate invasive weeds more often than native plants, which is, yeah, obviously a concern. So actually, the conservancy has already removed all of the European honeybees from, I believe, decades ago, but they worked really hard to remove them. And we haven't noticed them on the island until very recently. So if, if everyone feels that it's important to keep biodiversity of native animals, we'd be happy to provide more information.
Well, see what I know. I thought a honeybee was a honeybee and how cool is that? You were sitting back, but I was saying that, true, you two were sitting back there grinning at me, weren't you? She didn't know what the hell she's talking about.
Well, it's hard because there's no way anyone would know unless they're going out and searching all the time for new information.
Because I haven't seen any bees in town in a couple of years at all. I mean, so I was like, oh, welcome back, you know, I sleep. So I guess Emily's going to be hooked up with whomever, right?
Yes, we'd be happy to help. And Laura Brenner is the other wildlife biologist.
Leslie Warner, you want to step up? You're going to ask a question or make a statement?
It's about the bees. So what I notice, we get many, many, many come in our house because we don't have screens on our windows and they're all just dying. Is that what they're doing? They're coming to die because in the morning, they're all over the floor dead. And I thought they were regular bees, so I didn't want to kill them. So we're trying to, anyway, I would just like to understand what their life cycle is, if they're just coming here to die as it gets colder or what's happening?
Well, I have a, maybe they're...
You want to come up, tell them, Mike, because this would be of interest to everyone.
I'm Laura Brenner, I'm the other wildlife biologist. To answer your question, the worker bees have a really short lifespan and I don't know exactly, you know, it's a matter of days. So it would be pretty normal for them to come to your house, not be able to forage and end up dying. But the queens can live for years, as far as I know. So that's how the hive continues to circulate, but the queen stays constant. So it's not necessarily a sign that they're coming into town to die. They're probably able to forage on people's wildflowers and flowers they're cultivating.
Could we, because the same thing is happening at my house. Can we bring you a couple of them and you could see, see what kind of bee it is?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And Emily lives in town, so she's a good resource. I live in Middle Ranch, some, you know, a little bit further away, but also happy to help. Yeah, we can identify honeybees, yeah.
Great, okay, yes.
If you want to, you can drop your bees off.
Okay.
Your bees were...
All righty, all right, thank you. Yes, well, there's more to come. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Hillary Holt and I suppose this would be an appropriate time to mention that the last Friday lecture series this month up at the Nature Center at the top of the canyon is going to be about the native bees. It's going to be a bee expert, so please mark your calendar for the last Friday lecture. We're all over the bee thing.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other comments or? No? Okay, then we will move on to the consent calendar.
We have four items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is minutes from four different meetings. The first one is a regular city council meeting of October sixteenth, a special one on October nineteenth, and then two joint city council and planning commissioner meetings from August twenty-seventh and August nineteen, or September nineteenth. Second one is dispersment of warrants totaling one million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, thirty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. And that's for the warrant period of October sixth of two thousand and eighteen through October twenty-sixth of two thousand and eighteen. The third item is authorizing staff to use grant funds awarded by the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District to purchase eight new sets of spectator bleachers and two shade structures from Belson Outdoors for fifty-one thousand, sixty-three dollars. The fourth one is the second reading of an ordinance, moving the date of the city's general municipal election to the first Tuesday after the first Monday in March of even-numbered years or such other month as the statewide direct primary election may be held per the state law beginning in March of two thousand and twenty.
Okay, comments or?
Mayor Marshall, I had a question regarding one set of minutes from October sixteenth, a discussion on Vons and residential parking.
Sure.
So on number eight, there's an indication here that the consensus of the city council was to paint Beacon Street between Sumner and Metropole green one hour on both sides. But I think there was some recognition that we have residential people there so that we would do the same thing that we're proposing to do on one side of Catalina, which is to have residential parking permits as well.
Lower Catalina and lower Sumner would be residential preferred temporary on one side and the other side would be painted green?
Right, and that's the next section, subsection three.
Oh.
So it just indicates that we're, that the discussion was that we, the beacon between Sumner and Metropole would be painted green in one hour. But I think we were also going to include a provision for permit parking for residents.
But still painted green, right?
Right, yeah.
And then yes.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
That was the only...
Move staff from one to four.
Okay.
A second.
Call for the vote?
All eyes?
I'm just curious what we do with the old bleachers. Do we use them or do we? I'm sorry, I should have asked a little bit.
We are talking to the school about getting some up to the school for their use. And then also, there's some good one on them, so we'd take them and use them for construction projects, just have some, some one around. So we will try and recycle as much as we can.
Okay, item number five.
Okay, this is a discussion regarding the increase of cross-channel warfage. I know in several of our budget planning meetings, we had mentioned the idea of how we could increase the harbor revenues. And in the list that we proposed or put in the staff report, those are all projects for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. And that, he provided, one of the council members asked for a cash flow spreadsheet so you could see where the monies would be coming, when they'd be spent and when we'd be getting into our general fund. And we are proposing the fifty cents each way, so a dollar a round trip. We currently have two fifty in our municipal code that we received from the cross-channel carriers. So we are proposing to increase that to three dollars and fifty cents. I did have a meeting with the Catalina Express in person and I had reached out to Bob Black of the Newport Flyer and had a phone call in conversation with him. They were on board. If that's what the city chose to do, they didn't feel the additional dollar was going to be a deterrent. And I believe that I mentioned it, another council member asked if I had mentioned it to the chamber and I do believe I had the conversation with Jim. I don't remember there being any negative things from businesses. Now, I could follow up on that if... Where, Amanda? Do you want to walk through the cash flow?
What the cash flow, what I tried to do is model out for the next eighteen months what the harbor fund looked like. And I do apologize, I don't have it up available to the public anymore. So in, in general, what I attempted to do was model the anticipated revenues for the next eighteen months coming in the harbor fund. So I looked at the patterns of how we received the cash. The harbor fund in general is a cyclical business, if you will, where we have peak season where we see more revenues and we have valleys where we see less in the slower seasons. Some of the challenge with the grant funding, even the projects that are largely grant offset is there is a natural lag between when we spend the money and when we get reimbursed. The project that, the schedule that I'm showing you, and I'll take a moment to pull it up for the viewers to see as well, assumes a three-month lag in between when we expend the funds and when we're ultimately reimbursed. And just so you're aware, where I have the cutoff on December two thousand and nineteen, there are additional grant funds that we would be anticipating beyond that, that aren't reflected in that schedule, but the funds have already been expended in that schedule.
And is that a, our contribution is twenty percent on that?
Yes.
Yes.
How about some dogs?
Go Rams.
Apologize, I was putting this together just minutes before the meeting today. So the first slide here shows where we anticipated beginning fiscal year eighteen from a cash standpoint, the harbor fund. I looked at for the operating revenues for the first four months are based on what we actually have received and spent. As you can see, there are some even fluctuations even in the peak seasons as sometimes payments that typically are paid at the thirtieth might not be paid until the first week of the following month. So that is reflected in there. For the other assumptions that I used for this was for the fiscal year nineteen, so that's in the twenty budget, so the July two thousand and nineteen to December, which is on the third slide here, I assumed revenues staying flat in the harbor fund with the exception of revenues related to cruise ships where there is a known rate increase. And I assumed expenditures increasing at five percent. I took this number to give a somewhat conservative outlook. Obviously, if revenues improved, the cash balance would change. The other assumption that's worked into here is a three-month lag between when the grant-funded expenditures are spent and where the grant funding is received. In general, as you can see, that we will be drawing down on our fund balance just to cover the construction of the mold phase one, which will have significant expenditures projected for the second half of fiscal year nineteen. As that builds back up during the summer season where we're anticipating slightly less expenditures just given the busyness of the mole. But then again, that draws down going into the second half of fiscal year twenty. Again, that ending balance you see in December of two thousand and twenty does reflect a near-zero fund balance in the harbor. There would be significant grant funds due to the harbor fund because of the expenditures that you see in the second half of calendar year nineteen. So that's not necessarily that there would be no funds, but there would be no cash, at least contributed by the harbor in our funds to use. And this all assumes no additional increase in the warfage and revenues remaining flat, particularly related to warfage. So again, as you can see, in July eighteen, we started with two point six. Given kind of the delayed timing, we would anticipate ending the calendar year with nearly three million in cash available for the harbor fund. But as the projects for mold phase one ramps up, that quickly draws down on that fund balance and that pattern generally continues through two thousand and nineteen.
Why did you put the little red box around the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars?
Originally, I was just going to highlight the, when I was putting this together, how low it goes down. And then I finished the next part and I would have probably chose the December two thousand and nineteen as the one to highlight. But that's just to show that, one, the funds coming into the harbor fund are cyclical with the, with the season, they do fluctuate. And our planned expenditures do kind of line up with the time of decreased revenue, but that's by design because we want to do this construction minimizing the impact on tourism.
Now, am I missing the additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars we adding in for the South Beach?
The South Beach should have two hundred thousand assigned.
Yeah, it's here, November and December.
I had a hundred thousand anticipated this month to be spent and a hundred thousand in December. Again, these are best estimates. I did consult with Bob to come up with these. But again, as things change, this is, again, part science, part...
Okay, okay, that's the, I was thinking of just the whole, the whole null thing. Okay, perfect. Because it says, that two hundred thousand is under Cabrio mold substructure, that's why I was, right?
Emergency seawall, I think is what it's...
So what I, what I do, in the fourth line down, which is our capital outlay, is the total of all projected capital expenditures in that month. And then I broke down that capital outlay figure by which project those funds would be tied to. All of the planned capital outlay, with the exception of the seawall, is what we had in our adopted budget. The portion that is for fiscal year twenty reflects anticipated expenditures that aren't in the fiscal year nineteen budget, but they would be to further the construction on the mold phase two, which has started in the fiscal year nineteen budget. And there is some money set aside in there for the additional sand and sediment study, but we didn't... All of the planned capital outlay, with the exception of the seawall, is what we had in our adopted budget. The portion that is for fiscal year 20 reflects anticipated expenditures that aren't in the fiscal year 19 budget, but they would be to further the construction on the Mole Phase 2, which has started in the fiscal year 19 budget. And there is some money set aside in there for the additional sand and sediment study, but we did not include the full amount, which was 1.1 million, I believe, which we shared prior in August, as, you know, there is possibility for some of that being grant offset. So, the funds we did include there, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, just really reflect the preliminary engineering and the studies that would be involved in order to pursue those grants.
Staff, sorry, Denise, what was the, did you discuss a specific dollar amount that you were recommending when you spoke with?
Yes, with both of them, just the 50 cents each way, the dollar round trip. We are very sensitive to the fact of the increase out of everybody's pocket. We felt, and also the talk, how we've had the ballot measure on the last ballot for the hospital, that potential increase is looming out there, as well as the water rate case with Edison, of them wanting to put it on there. And not to put that separate, but I felt we have to protect our city infrastructure projects, and if we did proceed forward with your permission, we would have the first reading at the next council meeting and adopting it possibly at the first meeting in December, so it wouldn't go into effect till January 6.
From a revenue standpoint, that's not reflected in there. If we took the five-year average, revenues would be somewhere between 650 and 700,000 per year for that $1 increase. Again, with that taking effect in January, it'd be, less of that impact would be seen in the current fiscal year, about 300,000 of that would be in this fiscal year, and the remaining 350, 400,000 would be seen in the following fiscal year, as I mentioned, the cyclical nature of the...
Sure, that makes sense. Yes, councilman?
Yes, ma'am. In looking at some of the projects that you put in the staff report, some were related directly to the harbor, to the yachty's, to the boaters, and I don't see any recommendation on talking about any mooring fee increases.
Well, we just erased those in our last fee schedule.
Yes.
We could come back and reevaluate a reasonable increase to those also, councilmember?
Because you've got a half a million dollars worth of improvements to the mooring side of it.
Okay. We'll come back with a possible recommendation.
Hi. July, I mean, we normally try to hit that prior to July, and that's something that, you know, we're definitely going to look at.
But if we plan on doing that, possibly instead of being a dollar round trip, maybe it'd be 75 cents round trip?
I'm not so sure. Okay, that's fine. I mean, I, I don't know how you want to, you know, cut it out or split it up, but...
We'll do an evaluation and come back.
Yeah, you know, we can always come back and...
Spread the pain.
Well, and you could look at what they definitely impact. I mean, because the restrooms, perhaps, the pump-out station, you know, some of those...
Green pier.
Yeah, directly related to their activity, but some of these others not.
And the pump-out, and, I mean, there's grant funds waiting for that, and we're just waiting for the state to do some wording on the contract. I just talked to Lisa last week, and so that's hopefully coming down, coming down the way.
Great.
And I think, I'd like to share, this is just a snapshot of some of the projects. So, you imagine this, even over the next five years, when you look at what our preventative maintenance and what we need to do within the harbor. You look at every float, you look at the green pier, you look at our seawalls, we need to be into the preventive maintenance, and that's what this really gets at.
But not, the only source isn't cross-channel? Or it shouldn't be only cross-channel?
It shouldn't be the only source, but I'm just saying that it's this type of funding that we need, at least this level, to be able to start hitting that preventive maintenance, and you're going to see those improvements where, I mean, you look at every float right now, it needs some major repairs on it, and this would help fund that. And JJ's been working on getting that first, like, you know, float one, getting that out of the water in time to be able to get the maintenance on it and then get it back in. Okay? Any other questions on the project?
And how much estimate per float are you looking at?
Well, right now, on float one, I don't have, I don't have an estimate on that.
In prior years, how much did it run to fix?
Quite honestly, I can't find anything that we spent money to do it, so that's a hard question to ask. I mean...
Okay. Because I know we used our forces, right, we had a guy out at the boatyard working on...
Right. Well, the last time this float was out was 2009, I believe. So, I mean, it, it's, they're all, they're all, you know, they could, I don't know, I can throw a number out there, but quite honestly, it's a guesstimation at best, you know? And we'll be probably talking about that on the next item on the agenda, too.
Did you get some bids?
Yeah.
Once you get a bid, we'll figure it out.
So, would council like, just propose this? I could come back with possible being ready for the ordinance change, but also bringing up that same item, how much we did increase the fee schedule for the moorings, and how much more we could, that they're still reasonable, and then you can make your determination at the next city council meeting.
I just wanted to make an observation. I requested this cash flow because I don't feel comfortable with the idea that we adopt an increase and then it's in perpetuity. That there are specific projects that we're trying to fund, and I feel that we need to have the information to know what is it we're trying to fund, so that we can say to the public, we're going to increase the ticket price for a limited time period in order to pay for these projects, so that instead of the price, the ticket price just keeps going up and up and up, that there is some connection between the money we're collecting and the projects that we're completing, and then the extra amount goes away. It's the same complaint that I hear from people about the gas surcharges, you know, suddenly gas goes down and yet the surcharges remain. I think that there needs to be some connection between what is it that we're projecting we need money for, and when will we not need that money? Because even though we're showing a fund balance at the end of December 19 of $75,000, we know that there's more money coming in, and in 2020, that fund is going to build up significantly. So, my sense is that I want to get a better feel for how much do we need to collect in order to do these projects going forward, and I want a sunset. That would be my preference, to see a sunset.
I understand where you're coming from, Councilmember Albers. When we had talked about it at our previous budget meetings, that we had proposed a sunset of maybe one to two years, but it was with a larger round trip, $2 each way, $4 round trip to tear the Band-Aid off to get it. But as you know, it's kind of like an old house, you know, you can fix something, and the repairs just keep coming. I can say there could be a sunset for a year or two, but by the end of that second year, if I've had major infrastructure issues again, then I'd be coming back, I guess. I can do that, come back and say, we need to continue this. I'll wait for your direction.
I don't have a problem with saying, let's go with the dollar and put a couple-year sunset on it for now, and get more, because it's going to have to come back to the community anyway. So, to just put it out there to start to move forward, and then if in two weeks we decide, eh, no, bad idea, what the heck, nothing ventured, nothing gained, if the community is, for whatever. But I think, I think there's enough stuff here, even without looking at that $73,000, I think there's enough stuff here that if we're only raising, how much money?
650.
650?
Oh, 850.
No problem spending that money.
So, what we initially came, you know, we were saying that we were trying to raise about $2 million, and that was Cabrillo one, I mean, well, Mole Phase 1, Mole Phase 2, and then unknown. We just put, you know, a pretty good number at the sediment, you know, so the beach sand, and we're hoping that we're getting grants for the beach sand that would reduce that down. So, in saying that, that almost says it's a three-year period of time that we would need it to make sure that we weren't dipping below where our needs were, okay, to meet those projects. That's right in front of you right now.
Right, three years.
And we know that we don't have the green pier funded, and we know that that could be a very significant number to bring that up to codes and to do, you know, the preventive maintenance, because it's been a while since that happened. So, I'm just, yeah, we do need to have a CIP, and the harbor master and I are working for a CIP for the harbor, and some of that is just to get a little bit further studies on what condition our revetment is in the harbor, what condition, just like the dock between the yacht club and the tuna club, and we're working on those projects. So, get all of those pieces together and give you a full CIP, so, and we wish to do that. We're just, right now, we were trying to get Mole Phase 1, Mole Phase 2, and the sediment funded, because we know that we need to do those projects, and we know that we have grant funds in front of us for Mole Phase 1, Mole Phase 2, and hopefully we'll be successful on the sediment. And we'll know better on that with, you know, as we move into 2019, that application is due February 2019.
Council, do you have comments, or does the community want to comment on this? Okay, well, Pam, speak up again, because I would just like to say, let's do it and put it a two-year thing on there, and then if we have to extend it after that, we extend it after that.
I would be more comfortable with that.
Okay.
Your sunset.
So, bring it back as a first reading of an ordinance with a sunset of two years.
Two years. And a dollar.
I've got it.
Good. That gets us off the square. That's usually what you do, Ollie. You usually come and go, okay, let's start from here. Okay, that's good. All right, item number six.
Before JJ does his little thing, I just want to point out to council that this is strictly just asking for permission to go out for an RFP, if you think that's a good idea. The specifics of that RFP would be penciled out then, as far as like, how big the float would be, the term of it, and what they could tie to it.
Thank you. Yeah, at this stage of the game, I think it's prudent that we at least figure out what we're going to do with the end float on the end of our float. Again, we all know that Island Enterprises had their float there, it wasn't there last year. It caused some pretty good congestion issues on the pier, especially on the east side where they were at, with all Joe's running boats and kayaks and stuff going by. But it's a valuable piece of land, and I think that we, you know, prudently, we need to do something with it. I mean, there's a couple of options that I've thrown in there. First option is the city, the city build it and then rent it and do the lease on it. The second option is put an RFP out and see who is interested in it and let them build it. Let them, you know, we'll have the input, we'll have the design, I may be able to work with them with the design, and the city just, you know, basically collects the rent and the fees for the float being there. Again, not quite sure how you guys want to do that, or even if you want to do that, that's the reason why we brought this forward.
I just have a question, and I don't know if I can ask it.
Then probably not.
Probably can't ask it? Can you read my mind? I probably can't ask it.
If you have a question that may touch upon a legal matter, we can talk during a break.
Let's continue and move along then. Okay.
I read your question. So, basically, we need to do something. Now, I've talked to a couple of boat, float builders on the mainland, the guys that built the Catalina Express boats, and he gave a very, very ballpark figure without design, without engineering, and he said an 80-foot dock, 20-foot wide, would cost in the neighborhood of $170,000 to $175,000. That's at the top level, because we have nothing to base it on, until we get, until the drawings are done. And quite honestly, I just think it's better to, let's see who's interested in it, and if we need to give a long-term lease to be able to recoup the investment, then we can look at that. But I think it's better to...
So, I guess the question I have is this RFP just going to be open-ended, like the people propose whatever they want, and then we see how that fits? Or do you have some specific business plan in mind for how this would work?
I think that we, we sit down with staff, and we work out the details of the RFP. It's so big, so high, what, how are you going to moor it? How are you going to, what are you going to use it for? You know, and stuff, and work that, and work that out.
Very specific questions would be asked for them to answer, Pam, I think. Pretty sure we would be putting a maximum size, it just wouldn't be a free-for-all. We could bring the RFP back for your approval also, to see if we've thought of everything.
Yeah, I think that that would be...
I mean, the input from you guys are going to be very valuable. It's just, we're kind of tunnel vision focused on certain things, and you guys see the outside of it. We just want to know whether or not it's okay if we start working on this and start putting it together and see what happens.
And I'm, go ahead, council.
So, have we talked to anybody out there that has businesses out there that might be interested in maybe donating?
Donating?
Yeah, which is, I mean, interested in maybe helping us along.
Oh.
Shoreboat people, island company, whoever.
Yeah, no, we haven't pursued that.
Have we gone to them and asked them, would you be interested in giving so much money?
I think once the RFP...
I mean, I don't know.
I think once the RFP is finalized and goes out, I think that's when you're going to get the people to say, hey, I can do it, or no, I can't do it, or the cost is not, you know?
So, you want to regulate?
If we, if we build it and then lease it to you, you know, it's really open-ended right now. It's just, basically, we're just saying, do you guys think it's a good time now to start investigating this and moving forward on it?
And I think we need to...
And we definitely will bring this back and have you guys, you know, put your stamp of approval on it.
Well, what if we said, you go out for this, and then we go, eh, what the heck? We're going to build it ourselves.
Okay.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Just staff on it.
Yeah, well, in those people's time.
Right, yes.
And then, and then, and then in the RFP, do you get a specific as exclusive, non-exclusive in the RFP, or do you set that for later?
Yes, no, that will be in the RFP, because obviously, I mean, I'm not going to want to get into business and have somebody else use my float without any, you know, I get that part, so, yeah. No, that...
Okay. Mayor, and then I just kind of had a strange thought, you know, because I hope that we're moving towards a change in, with the mole where the express will not have to be in reverse, and that may involve, I'm assuming, changes to the floats. Do we have anything currently that could be used for this end float if, that we may be replacing with something that will accommodate the changes to the mole, opposed to having to have something constructed?
You're going to have, you're going to have to build it. I mean, either they're going to build it or we're going to build it. It's going to have to be built, because the two docks at the mole, the four and five, that's just a resurfacing, reciting.
Right, no, I'm talking about it one.
Well, one's going to be attached.
JJ, I think Councilmember Albers is asking how we've talked about securing one, two, and three as a trial, or one and two, or something you were talking about, I think that's what she's asking.
We're currently working on right now.
So, I'm just, I'm just projecting forward. Let's say that we discover, okay, tying them together isn't adequate, but if we had a single dock built, that means that we would have two docks out at Mole 1 that we might be able to repurpose. Is there any way that those floats could be repurposed for this use?
Oh, we can always look at that.
Okay.
I mean, because they're different designs, and it doesn't match up to our end float.
That's my, I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, no, no, and that's fine. It just, it, we're, the floats that we have there, I don't see us rebuilding new floats. I see us adding float one to connect to float two, and that will serve, solve the problem with the float issue. We're definitely looking into some new ways of anchoring the boat to put it in neutral. And I had a conversation yesterday with Greg, and he's all on board doing that, so I don't, I don't see us making...
Okay, I was just throwing it out there as some, a possibility.
All right, so you've got direction?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Harbor Master. Item number seven, let's discuss homelessness.
So, council brought this item up at the September 18 city council meeting, and I think, I think, I know that Councilmember Albers and Amanda Cook had gone to a homeless, was that with Gateway Cities, Pam?
No, it wasn't just Gateway Cities, it was the county's implementation training.
So, you wanted to have it as an item so we could, you could provide direction to staff and our direction for the city of how to proceed with it? I don't have.
You know, it's interesting because when we had that meeting on Friday, and we talked about the homelessness, and, and it takes, what, 33 visits before they can get somebody to say, okay, I'm tired of being homeless? And that's when they're visiting them on a regular basis to connect with them and check what their needs are. So, talk to me a little bit, because I'm more concerned right now about what do our local 12 people need? And many of them we know by name. Number one, do they need any assistance at all? And if it is, what is the assistance we need so we can at least, as winter comes and further on, what can we do to help those folks? And they may say, I'm perfectly fine, I don't need any help, or I need a shower, or I need food, or I need whatever. So, but, go ahead in your thinking.
Well, because I think we're looking at two populations, the people that we've identified in the count, and I think that you're, the work that you're doing is fabulous, you know, I think that we need a program to help people stay on meds, you know, mental health services, maybe emergency weather relief for that population, that makes sense. But then I think there's also a larger population of people who are, one, medical bill away from not being able to pay their rent, for which we need, I think, funding through the county to help us with that. And so, I had, one of the things we discovered is because we did not apply for a planning grant, and we didn't do a plan, it means that we really don't have access to the funds. And so, the city manager is working, I hope, on a letter to the board of supervisors to ask that they do another round of funding for plans. But even in the meantime, we might be able to pull some ideas from the plans that other cities did in terms of how to deal with that population. And I think there's some recognition, I don't know that we're going to be building emergency housing, I don't, I don't see that happening, although I know that there was a lot of community discussion on Facebook. There was a gentleman who was sleeping at Kenaby Park, and there's a new court case, court decision that impacts the city's ability to prohibit people from doing that, if there aren't other resources for those, for housing for those populations. So.
Okay, so, okay. So I would like us to, and I don't know if it takes a task force or it takes community services, I would like to find out the needs with our obvious homeless, you know, and I don't think that would take very long, you know, to find out, do they have any resources, financial resources, as much as we can find out about their medical status, but what are their needs on a daily basis? Interestingly enough, and this would seem easy, I went up to the school the other day, and they serve these kids breakfast, and they have these wrapped burritos that don't get used. They have apples, they have all of this stuff that doesn't get used, and it goes in the trash. So if we had a system, and it doesn't take much to be able to do it, again, if we find that our people are hungry, to say, here it is in a certain time of day, come and get this stuff, you know? I mean, but again, I don't know how many of our people are actually hungry versus concerned about the weather when it starts to rain and that kind of thing. And if we're moving them along, and we shouldn't, can't really legally move them along, then what do we want to do?
I have a lot of resources that the LA County Commission that I'm on, we had two people from Long, I'm not, sorry, not Long Beach Unified, LA Unified School District. They have an amazing program where all the food that's not consumed is put on a table, any kid can take what they want to bring home for later, and I'm shocked that we don't have a program that.
They're not putting it in their backpacks, they're just throwing it in the trash.
Right.
And this is the, so, I mean, and we, that dialogue with the school would have to go further, but, but, yes. So I don't know, so what do you, so what do we want to do?
In terms of, you know, resources, Denise, how did you, who did you envision would be part of the task force?
Well, good question. Obviously, Dan Hunkie would be helping, and.
And Devon's going to come up here and say something. Oh, no, are you stood up? Go on.
In 2016, one of the council members, working collaboratively with people assisting the homeless, Pat, in Long Beach, put together a group, and that's kind of, that meeting is what spurred the idea of putting together a task force that would most likely include our community services director, as well as members of the Cali Island Medical Center staff. We don't have a human services department here at the city, so we would take those bodies of interested parties in town and put them all together in one room. So that way, once we identify a member of our chronically homeless or transiently, transiently homeless, I don't know why I'm so nervous in front of you guys.
We see everything.
A transiently homeless population, we can start a case file, we don't have any social workers on staff here at the city either. So we could put, start together a case file, work together with the sheriff's department when they find the person in distress, or maybe having an altercation with a member of the public, and then put together an action plan for each individual. So.
That, the intensity of what you're talking there is more what we are doing now with this other, with this other program, with mental health, with law enforcement. So that, that structure is already in place, pretty much.
So what's going on right now is those structures exist, and, but nothing's connected so much that maybe even us at City Hall are aware of the efforts. So, we're hoping to put everyone, put all the interested parties together. And if you already have a mechanism in working, it would just be a matter of getting whatever other pieces need to get together, together.
The only thing I think, because I go there and Cindy goes there, I think the only other person to insert would be somebody like Dan, because there was 25 of us met the other day. These 25 people can't get together on a, on a regular basis because they come from all over, but like I said, there's the little task force that they're each kind of taking who they need to make that stuff happen, so to fold into that. But there, but this task force is not, task force is not going to be dealing with the immediate at all. I mean, they're not going to be dealing with the kind of people that I'm talking about that we want to be able to serve.
Yeah, in terms of shower tokens or anything, that's where our community services department could be the immediate, the media hand that you're.
Exactly. So I don't know, maybe just to include Dan on whatever they've got going, and Scott Schmuckler, because you do a lot of service, you know what a lot of those folks need.
May I speak?
Please, please do. Yeah, you've been dealing with it probably more than anybody in this town.
You know, the issue of homelessness, you know, every time I listen to a homeless discussion, it always ends up being them. And it really quite bothers me because it's not them. Our town has created a structure, and I watch it again and again, in which people come here because they enjoy the town. It's as simple as that. It's a wonderful place to live. Anybody disagree? I think so. We're safe, we're warm, it's a nice place, okay? And we get homeless that come in here. Believe it or not, they're a minor part. The people who come through my door, and it comes through all the time, are employed people in this town. People who have lost their housing again, and again, and again. Five incidences I have had in the last year where a housing unit has been taken out of housing stock because, perfectly good reasons, okay? Three times, it was the owners have decided they're going to move to the island because they retired. They're baby boomers like me. They've retired, they removed it from housing stock, okay? Well, where's the new stock? There isn't any. One of them was an investor, perfectly good idea, buying a triplex. Matter of fact, I know him. And, but he wanted to be able to have one of the units where his family would be able to use. Great, one less in the housing side. Unit directly behind me has been occupied by families for a long time. Now it's sitting empty, totally empty, totally deserted, nothing going on. I've got four that I've been watching in town, sitting deserted. My suspicion is that those are sitting deserted so they can apply for a CPU in a couple of years. That's my suspicion, I don't know that for sure. All I know is our housing stock continues to diminish. All I know is I have a manager at Vons who's got a terrific new store and has no place to live beginning December 1st. And there's nowhere in town for him to rent at a rate. People tell me there's, there's homes available on, in the newspaper, yeah, but now we've got the market forces working, you know, supply and demand. There is some supply out there, the demand's out there, but the wages don't match, you know? So we, the issue is not just mental health, the issue is not can they be fit? I don't think there's, anybody's ever walked up to our church and not been able to get a meal, you know? I mean, that just, we feed people constantly. I currently have, at the peak of the summer, I had seven different people living either in the church or church property in one way or another. Right now, I think we're down to three. So it ebbs and flows in that. But none of these people are what you typically see as the quote homeless. See, because the homeless, I can transition. I can bring them into program, I can get them dealt with, with their addiction problems, those ones I can do something with. But I've watched, I don't know, you guys have been here long enough, how many, what percentage of our teachers now are able to have a home on the island? Very small percentage, you know? I just, I think of Mary Lou's retiring this year, you know, Pastor Ron's wife, you know, great, great teacher. They have a home on the island because the church has provided it all these years, you know? There's different people that I see that the change has happened. I look at, I look at people in professions. I don't know, do you all live here on the island? I guess you do, maybe. But how many people have you bought into this city that are unable to live here? We have an issue that's much larger than dealing with one set of homeless population. And if we don't have a task force that takes on the issue in a larger sense, we're really not dealing with it. You know, you're talking about the immediate, and yeah, there is immediate needs, and I 100% agree with you, Devon. We need to be able to coordinate, we need to be able to put things together to deal with those immediate needs. The sheriff's department's very good at dealing with me, so I, you know, we deal all the time. I get calls in the middle of the night, people in put-out the streets, people who are stranded. And God granted me a home with extra rooms, so my doors open up all the time. Or the teen center opens up, you know, and the couch down at the teen center suddenly has someone down there. Or our sanctuary, the back of our sanctuary is someone there. Those emergency situations, we can deal with. It's the bigger situation of what we're doing to our town. We've got a workforce that we can't house. I get really frustrated with the Bird Park, I think it's the most beautiful housing project you could possibly ask for, but because of the affordable housing limitations, those people are stymied. They can't afford to earn more money or to advance in their jobs because they'll lose their housing. You know, we've just created some awful situations, and we've got to address those things. And so, really, I come to say, don't look small, look big. I think there's some big solutions out there that we can find as a community, that we can use some innovation in other, rather than just saying, oh, well, let's go see if the state can help us, or let's go see if the county can help us. Not that I have anything wrong with that, but I think as a community, as a community with a mote around it, and extremely, I was listening earlier, you said, you know, Avalon and that 158-page marijuana thing, Avalon's got this one little sentence drawn out for it, you know? And we've got these special rules that apply to Avalon for vehicles, and those special things because we are unique. You know, we can't have our workforce draw from the other city. That just doesn't work. So there's so many issues there that need to be taken on, and we need to make sure that we put people that will address those things to begin to address those issues. And of course, I'm standing up here because I will throw myself right into that fray. So.
Well, you can't, because we talk about housing on an ongoing basis, and I think you've missed maybe some of the conversations and the direction that we're, we've been talking about going. So if you want to be involved in those, that would be awesome.
Very much so.
Yes, great, Scott, thank you.
Thanks.
No, we hear you, yeah. That being said, where are we?
So I think the appropriate motion that there was support would be to support the staff's establishment of a homeless committee, not to create it yourself. That creates Brown Act issues, but if you support the establishment of it, we could do that.
Great motion, I'll move it.
Is that, are you good with that, Pam?
I do agree with that. I did want to just comment out that, I mean, we, you know, we discussed before that we've got that housing money, that we were going to look for properties that were on the market, and that seems to have kind of stalled. And I think this is a call for the city to, you know, step up and see what we can do. I mean, we all know, part of the problem is land. It's very hard to build new housing if you don't have someplace to build it. But the idea that there might be things on the market, I hope that we could start looking at that again.
Right, okay. And the remodel of the East Wipper property.
Right, and that's coming back next month, right.
Okay, all right, so is that need a motion and a second?
Ollie, maybe.
I'm moving, I'm moved.
And Pam's second?
Oh, I seconded.
Okay, comments?
All right, second.
Call for the vote.
Paul Eyes?
Okay, number, I don't, thank you, item number eight.
So, I have, oh, you, I'm sorry. No, that's all right. Number eight is on the agenda this evening, I believe, whatever meeting Ollie and Pam missed, because you were at meetings, it was brought up at that meeting.
Right, October 2nd, I remember, yes.
So, that's why this item is here, it was a recommendation to bring it back for a discussion and direction to staff to have the city council meeting possibly start earlier. I only noted in the staff report, cities that we found that did start earlier, there are some other ideas, some of them had them during the, different parts of the council meeting during the middle of the day, say, the closed session, or presentations, or they just set it up, they had different ideas. So.
Mayor, I have a practical problem. The LA County Commission meeting that I have is on the first Tuesday, it's at 9:30 downtown LA. By the time I get back, I'm on the 2 o'clock boat.
Oh, okay.
So, by the time I get off, I get home, maybe I get to eat a little something before I turn and come back out, I really can't.
At this point, that's.
At this point, that's, yeah.
I mean, and I appreciate, go ahead.
I agree with the email we got about, I think we exclude significant proportion of the population.
I agree with that too, yeah.
What, going, and you?
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm okay with it too, I just know that typically the people we see, the people that come, people that typically see are an elder or a retired population, so it's easier for them to get up here and not go home in the dark at 7:30 or 8 o'clock at night. However, I understand about the working class, however, I notice most business people, if they've got something on the agenda, they're, they're, they are obligated to come and represent their own business, so that no matter when it is, they would be coming. I'm also looking at budget and saying, wouldn't it be nice to be able to, maybe the city attorney, that one week could come, go back early, and we don't have to pay for a hotel room? Or we bring over contractors, we bring over people and save the money for a hotel if they could leave and buy, and per diem and that kind of thing. So I was looking at it from a financial thing, and then who typically are the people that come here? Because a lot of people, well, half of the town right now can't even watch us on television because of the system, but. because of the system, but, so that's what I was just saying, looking at options, but Cheryl Allison is here, she has a comment. And I just want to say one more thing, by, by starting the meetings early, it makes people, people don't have to run down in their pajamas as they have in the past.
That's part of the fun.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
I, I am just concerned about that because our community, as we've talked about on other levels tonight, is very different, and we're a very small community, and I believe people like to be involved. Even though a lot of people don't show up all the time, if there is something that you really have strong feelings about, most of the people would not be able to come at 3 o'clock, because I would believe a majority of this town probably works at that time. And it, for me, even the budget meeting, I was very interested in the budget meeting, and it was in the middle of the day on a Friday. I can't watch it at work, live, so I tried to watch it later, and it, it really was messed up. I mean, you couldn't, anytime there was a PowerPoint up, you couldn't understand what anybody was saying, and so I really have no idea what happened. And I understand the financial issues, I think you guys have done a great job trying to get the people that need to make presentations and make the vote happen, and you've done a very good job at it. I just think it's a disservice to this town if somebody wants to either watch the meeting live or attend because they have an opinion that they're not going to be able to. At least if it's going late, they have the option of deciding whether or not they want to stay up late to attend, but if it's at a time they just can't get off work, they can't, they can't.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's all.
Any other comments? Okay, I think this item is dead, let's move on.
That's it?
And now we go into, and now we go into closed session. Thank you all for coming.
Good night, Tony.
Yeah, we have two closed session items. On number one, real property negotiators regarding the Avalon Fuel Duck property, council, Councilmember Hernandez will be recusing himself from that, and Councilmember Alvarez may be recusing herself from part of that if it involves a company in which she has a financial interest in terms of income. Just, I'm just putting it out there, and then we also have public employee dismissal, discipline release.
Well, let's do that one first, and so, Councilmember Hernandez can leave afterwards.
What? [laughing]
We are black back from closed session.
No report of action.
No further comments, meeting adjourned. Good night, Tony.
Good night, Peter.